Good afternoon everyone, we might make the start of one o'clock. We now welcome everyone this afternoon to this special council meeting. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the official owners of the land which now compiles as Greater Shepparton. With due respect to their tribal elements, we celebrate the continuing culture and we acknowledge the memory of the ancestors. Please note our privacy notice that this public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website along with the official minutes of this meeting. All care is taken to maintain your privacy, however, as a visitor in the public gallery, it is assumed that your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast to the public. It is also assumed that your consent is given to use and disclosure of any information that you share at the meeting, including personal or sensitive information to any persons who access those recordings or minutes. Councillor, item number three, do we have any apologies to be noted?
Yes, there are those of the apology from councillor Horace Varey, you know, to believe that's granted.
Thank you very much. Do I accept them? Thank you councillor Adam, all those in favour, motion carried, unopposed. Do we have any councillors have a declaration of conflict of interest that needs to be declared this afternoon?
No.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the motion if I may, that the speaking time set out in clause fifty-six of the Greater Shepparton City Council Local Law Number Two be extended to ten minutes with no extension for the duration of this meeting only to allow all councillors additional time to address and debate these important matters.
Thank you councillor Summer, do I have a second please? Councillor Abdullah. Councillor Summer, do you like to speak to that motion?
I'll take that.
Councillor Abdullah.
I'll go first.
May councillor wish to speak against the motion?
Yeah.
May councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote, all those in favour, against. Motion carried, sorry, was that against? Sorry councillor Adam, ah sorry councillor Hayesman against? Sorry, I might go back to that, all those in favour, against.
The vision please, Mrs Hayesman.
So, all those in favour, we have councillor Summer, we have councillor Patterson, councillor Sutton, councillor Abdullah, councillor Jovanetti and councillor Adam, and against we have councillor Hayesman.
And councillor Adam.
To councillor Adam and councillor Hayesman. So the motion has been carried. Sorry, carried with one o'clock, sorry councillor, councillor O'Keefe in support, thank you.
Before we begin, madam mayor, I'd just like a quick point of order. Section eighty-four of the Local Government Act states that to call a special meeting, the mayor or at least three councillors may give written notice to call a special meeting at the council, and that the notice must specify the date and time of the special meeting and the business to be transacted. And since we didn't resolve to call a special meeting at last Tuesday's ordinary meeting, I'd like to see that notice if possible, should have your signature on it.
I will check that out in part, if I see what you can do.
Can somebody just go and get it? Otherwise the mayor would be illegal.
The meeting is called appropriately. The notice was placed in the Shepherdan Muse on the fifteenth of February in appropriate form, that was prior to seven days.
Yeah, that's the notice that was filed. If that could be gathered well, we need to make, just to ensure that the meeting was called appropriately.
Okay, thank you so much, madam mayor. Councillors, we'll now go to page two, item five point one, contract one eight six five, Principal Building Contract of Panel Recommendation and New Sam Budget Update. The recommendation is on page three. The councillor would like to move the motion, please. May the councillor move that, please?
The recommendation on page three, as well, we're here for this particular subject, so we recommend that the council acknowledge that council has secured additional funding from the federal government and SAM Foundation to offset the increase in the capital required for stage one of the SAM project. Acknowledge, went to, and accept that council will commence stage one works with stage two on hold until further funding resource from external funding bodies. Point three, endorse the revised project budget, construction phase of forty-seven point four million ex GST, as detailed in the report to enable stage one works to commence. Point four, accept the tender submitted by Kane Construction to fight through, for lump sum contract number one eight six five, construction of the Shepherdan, of the new Shepherdan Art Museum, with a value of forty-five point nine seven five point nine five four million, I think forty-five million dollars, seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars, including GST, with two point seven five million, including GST, of the contract's sum conditional funding gain for stage two. Point five, authorize the chief executive officer to sign and seal the contract documents. Point six, authorize the chief executive officer to sign off on monthly progress payments up to three quarter of three million, including GST for contract number one eight six five.
Thank you very much councillor Adam, do I have a second please? Councillor Abdullah. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, well, I will now, I guess. The picture we gathered here today is actually discuss doing the thought with SAM offices at the final stage, endorsing the right budget, not to the construction phase. But this is a project that's been on the minds of Shepherdan Art Museum for nearly five years now. The council have made progressive decisions along the way, that's the path we chose, this is the final one. I must confess, I'm not really that overwhelmed with the fact that we're still discussing financial situations this late in the game. I accept that tenders of this nature, of this size, do sometimes blow out in respect to the end value, but I think all councillors agree with me, madam mayor, that we probably haven't been as, as I say, as correct in our assessments of at the quality surveying stage. That being said, that's been brought to attention by the CEO, Greenwich Times, and I know that he's taking action in respect to that, and that's been indicated by our resolutions in respect to the more, I won't be involved in this conversation, but contingency component of that project, because hopefully it will then mean that we don't get this stage again. So I'm not really happy with that, but we're here. Now, to be financially responsible, I don't think we should be actually contributing any more funds at this point, and the motion never suggests we do. However, we have put extra money in over the past six months or so. The end result is the same. Now, New Sam, I don't think we're here to discuss, or I'm not here to discuss, the merits of SAM, I think I've made that quite clear in the past three, four years. I fully support it, I think it's an absolute game changer, it could become a spiritual, probably cultural home of our indigenous community as well, and that's a factor that we should not overlook, that's one of the major factors of this building, I think, absolutely. So, these types of projects, yes, they do run into difficulty in respect to pricing sometimes, that's not unique to Greater Shepparton, that's a state government, federal government concern as well. I believe this organisation has tackled it with some real solutions, and I think this recommendation today does provide that. And also, just from a financial point of view, madam mayor, if we chose not to move forward with this, this council's already on community, we've invested about three billion dollars in this, so not to move forward without putting any extra money in, that's what we're not being asked at here today, I think that would be financially irresponsible, just those three billion dollars virtually all away. So, as I said, I'm going to bring the merits of SAM, I fully support it, it's an economic project, and sometimes if you run into minor difficulties, it will be resolved, I think with this motion today, I'll look forward to the first sort of thing as soon as possible.
Thank you very much councillor Adam. Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, madam mayor, thanks very much. As councillor Dina Adam has already stated, that big, that where we stand now is that we have this project funding which has to be revised. Big and complex projects like SAM can be challenging. Initial estimates do get revised during the project execution, as and when more information becomes available, or when there are changes to the external project environment, such as higher than anticipated cost of materials in this case. Well, in case of SAM, some of the complexities involve an acute increase in construction material cost, in particular concrete and steel, then there are secondary costs of constructing a large building in a regional market setting, and of course, some inadequate contingency in the original estimates. So what, so what was done to bring the construction cost within the allocated budget? Well, we have seen in the report, a value management exercise was carried out to identify alternate cost effective materials and items for scope removals, so as to bridge the gap between the budgeted allocations and tender cost. There were one for the items that were presented, potential cost savings. As a result of this value management exercise, a cost saving of nearly one point three million dollars was realised, without compromising functionality of the design. And this VM process was reviewed independently by officers of Victorian government architects, which confirmed that the right processes were undertaken. So obviously, they were subject matter experts to review this independent process, and they came back with their decision. Anything more than these items would result in a less value architecture with less functionality and less impressive and impactful space. Now, the VM process did not bring the tender price under the budgeted allocation. So here is how council is proposing to address this project issue, which is included in the recommendations, that the project construction be divided into two stages, stage one and stage two. Well, I must emphasise that there is no additional cost burden on rate payers in stage one. The additional funding has been secured from federal government and SAM Foundation for stage one. So this means that stage one is ready to go without any additional funding from the council. For stage two, the funding gap of two point five million dollars, the plan is to secure this amount from the, from various other funding points. Now, why do I support this project? I just want to say that contrary to the perception held by many community members, I believe this project is not about, not about only an expensive building, or art, or art lover's dreams. For me, New Sam is more about the vision of a livable Greater Shepparton region that is thriving and sustainable, and able to attract businesses, tourists, professionals, students and workers in this region. There is a huge potential to benefit from the fluent effects of having an iconic regional public space, such as SAM in Shepparton. Should we then not exploit this opportunity, I ask? How do you want Greater Shepparton to look like in the next five to ten years' time? Does Shepparton currently have that attractive profile for most people to visit, work, create employment and live here for long term? What are the many impressive architecture and places of interest that will bring people to this, to this region, that will attract specialists and professionals and their families to come and stay in Shepparton? We need to develop such assets and facilities that are beneficial to the community and are the pride of our region. Sports precinct, Moov Museum, Shepparton Courthouse, they are all part of this same endeavour. Doesn't our Greater Shepparton community deserve this quality community space and rejuvenation of economic activity through cultural tourism? I ask. Yes, agreed, we are experiencing many challenges in our region, drugs and alcohol, family violence, gambling, obesity, parking and so on. And I do understand the importance of addressing these problems for our community and strongly advocating for them and finding the right solutions for these. But, the reality is that the federal government's contribution and state government's funding, they are all coming from the art bucket of their budget, and cannot be spent on any of these mentioned problems. So if we decide not to use this and return these, the funds will go to another town. Whereas, by investing fifteen million dollars from local council budget, we will get a significant asset that will contribute in a big way towards uplifting the livability image of Shepparton, and generate economic activity, like that we have seen in case of Mona in Tasmania, and of course our Bendigo Art Gallery. So the question is, should we not follow, should we just follow our emotions and personal preferences, or should we have some rational thinking and leadership with the community into best long-term outcomes for the community? On the question of why we should not choose to scrap this project, well, the reasons are, have a look at the many consequences. One is of course that the Greater Shepparton, for the Greater Shepparton, there'll be loss, it will be a lost opportunity to position itself as an attractive region in various aspects.
Socially, aesthetically, intellectually and economically, Greater Shepparton needs to make some bold decisions that will benefit its people in the long run. In the next five, ten, two years, where will Greater Shepparton be if we do not build such spaces and places of interest and social cohesion? We will remain in this cycle of negativity, and if we, if we don't meet our challenges, head on with positivity. Also, don't forget that there will be loss of reputation for us, and of course, the sunk cost, which will be more than the two point five million funding gap currently. There will be loss of reliability and confidence when advocating for future funding with state and federal government. And of course, potential legal costs for termination of contracts, which will be more than the deficit that we currently have. Hence, I urge everyone to show positivity and leadership, and think of this as an opportunity for the whole region. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Abdullah. Very much. Any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Councillor Summer?
Thank you, madam mayor. I have quite a bit to say, I've tried to condense it down in case I didn't get the ten minutes, but I'll start, I know there's a lot of supporters here today, which is great, I don't think that the non-supporters had very much notice of the meeting, so unfortunately it might be a bit lopsided, but I'll continue anyway. I don't think much has changed in this debate, except for the increasing price tag. SAM is still based on pie in the sky ideals, with little or no broader community input, and every argument that I've used in the past still does apply. I don't think there's any way anyone here is going to shift their opinion, because we're all reading of pre-prepared speeches, and I'm going to do that too, but I'll focus directly on why we can't pass this specific motion. You can see up there, point one, it's inaccurate, the SAM Foundation have not, quote, "secured additional funding", so despite their best intentions and the nature of philanthropy, I do understand that. These are only pledges, and as someone said to me recently, a pledge is only as good as a chalk wedge, which I think is a little harsh, but it does kind of hit the point there, we do not have that. Originally, the foundation had a commitment of twelve point five million, and yet somehow we're supposed to feel more confident with a lower pledge of twelve million and no immediate four million dollars for the capital spend that was stipulated in notices of motions as well as the business case. Point two, I kind of laughed when I read that, because it's a moot point, it does imply that we will build SAM no matter what. There was no resolution to split the project into stages in the past, and once we sign this contract, it's pretty clear that we will have to fund stage two, because no government in their right mind will offer funding for a car park once the over glorified gallery is open, and we can't very well let the glitterati park on dirt. The only purpose of going through the pantomime of split stages that I can see is a clumsy effort at offering more bite-sized chunks of this project, just enough so that councillors don't spit the whole thing out in disgust. Fortunately or unfortunately, it's blindingly clear to most people, that point two is really a ruse. As for the revised budget in point three, really, yes, it's a ten million dollar blowout, but it won't be the last. Essentially, this figure only includes built structures. Other non-capitalised assets and items include refurbishing the current SAM, currently out to tender just for consultation, it's a hundred and thirty thousand, electricity, water, air filtration promotions, annual staffing costs, art procurements, opening night, regular events, insurance to name but a few. There's no environmental report in relation to the wetlands, no traffic study for Wyndham Street, no guarantee it won't flood, no room for expansion on a tiny footprint at the lake, and it's located so far away from the CBD that economic foot traffic will be minimal. We need to admit that SAM has grown bigger than Ben Hur, with very little community benefit remaining. The third point, extremely disappointing. Sorry, fourth point, fourth point is extremely disappointing. We paid a quarter of a million dollars for a business case outlining an eighty percent economic flow-on to local businesses, eighty percent local. Accepting Kane Constructions for the tender will kiss that local content goodbye, because they are a Melbourne company. And that means goodbye to the promised fifty-eight million dollar flow-on for our community, as said in the business case, and goodbye to the foreshadowed ninety new jobs, also listed in the business case. So this reason alone should make councillors stop and think, because it undermines the decision-making process right up to this point. If Melbourne companies are the only ones with expertise to build this, why wasn't that picked up from the beginning? If you read the business case in context now, it actually warns us against building SAM. We're supposed to see a positive net value of nine point one five million over ten years of operation, but our ratepayers' contribution, sorry, my microphone keeps cutting out.
Right, we can hear you then.
Thank you. Yeah, so, we're supposed to see a positive net value of nine point one five million over ten years of operation, and our ratepayers' contribution is nearing twenty million. Economics one oh one says that that's not a gain, it's a loss, doing absolutely nothing and not building it. That was projected at a negative economic impact of ten point seven three million, which is still a better deal than actually building it. So let this sink in, we will actually get better outcomes by not building it. Point five, that seals our commitment to SAM no matter what. If SAM was ever meant to represent a beacon of hope for our community, it's far from that now. Some councillors may have been seduced by its grandeur, but to the average ratepayer, SAM represents everything that's wrong with this city. It's all about the haves and the haves-nots, that's the perception. And it's quite ironic that from the top floor of that SAM building, we'll be able to see our lakeside homeless population. Fifty million dollars is a lot of money, and I'm sure that we could use it in better ways, even just our own fifteen, which I realise is what we've pledged. And worst of all, ratepayers will have the added insult of driving past SAM every day, with the reminder that their opinion does not matter at the hands of this council. How is that supposed to increase town pride? SAM will create an underclass, and it will be a financial noose around the necks of our ratepayers for the entirety of its useful life. There's four or five of these buildings on every Melbourne block, so you're dreaming if you think this will attract or retain professionals. Mona, a private enterprise that costs two hundred and sixty million, and Bendigo at least, they're clever enough to create a beautiful sprawling arts precinct that's growing and it's lovely and it's creating a bit of traction, but there's no precinct here, and we're not a port. You literally have to turn off the hum to get here, and SAM won't make people do that. We've literally put all our eggs in one black box on the lake, and the public are extremely unhappy about it. So anyone here claiming to be concerned about council's reputation should hang their heads in shame, because our reputation has been hit again and again for reasons well within our control. This is the last chance we have to admit the project's gone too far, cut our losses and move on. And the sixth dot point, which is probably the most outrageous of them all, we delegate five hundred thousand to the CEO, which is what we as a councillor decided was fair, and this is over six times that much every month. The purpose of delegations is to oversee responsible spending in line with community expectation. It's extremely poor judgement to slide that wad over to one person each month for the purpose of one project with so many variables. I'd wager from that, we'd get some unwanted attention from the inspectorate for skirting our own due diligence, not to mention O H N S liability from putting stress on the CEO. So in closing, thanks for your support guys, now we're not supposed to talk to the gallery and they're not supposed to talk to us, just so you're aware. In closing, one-third of people in our community satisfaction survey rejected SAM outright, and that blows away the fallacy that only a few vocal people are against it. That is an organisational lie. This room might be full of them, but the opposing people didn't realise this meeting was even on. So, if we were faced with this recommendation, exactly as it reads right now when we first broached this project, we would have laughed and laughed and laughed, there's no way it would have got any traction. Some of you swore black and blue you would not spend one cent above the original cost of thirty-four million, yet you kept edging forward with your vote. Don't do it this time, stop chasing the carrot down a crumbling rabbit hole, we're not even at the carrot yet, we've still got a long way to go. Now's the only chance to admit we've inherited a dud project and walk away. Regardless of reputational damage, there won't be much to hang our hats on if we're replaced by administrators for gross misspend of public funds. It's my hope that we have the intestinal fortitude to stand up for our broader community, and they really don't want it, in case you haven't noticed. Otherwise, why are we even here? Thank you.
All right, thank you councillor Summer. Any other councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Jovanetti?
Thank you, madam mayor, I have a contrary view to councillor Summer. This issue of the Shepherdan Arts Museum has divided sections of the community. It reminds me of the community reaction to Aqualmove's decision of the council at the time. Similar issues such as cost, don't need a new pool, lack of consultation, et cetera. What do we all think of Aqualmove's now, and how well has it performed over a period of twenty-five years? I for one, I'm not an art supporter, I rarely venture into art galleries, and I'm not a fan of abstract art. Saying that doesn't mean I don't believe the SAM proposal will be beneficial to Greater Shepparton into the future. If linked to the museum of Motor Evolution, Move, or the car and, truck and car museum, we have an ideal opportunity for tourists to visit Shepparton and stay for the weekend, which will add significantly to the economic outcomes for the city and surrounds. People will visit from out of town to view these unique tourist locations. It'll be up to council staff to ensure that we hold exhibitions similar to those of Bendigo, with their Marilyn Monroe and Grace Kelly exhibitions. People travel from all over the country to view these exhibitions, and the economic benefit to Bendigo is huge. Who wouldn't want to come and visit an Elvis Presley or an Lady Di exhibition in Shepparton? Now, these are the types of exhibitions we could host at SAM that we currently can't because the space doesn't allow it. SAM is more than an art gallery, it's a space for the community to get together, to enjoy the various cultures we have in Shepparton, to have different experiences and to view all different, different aspects of art. Yes, it's a lot of money, but when you consider councillors contributing fifteen million and thirty-five million is coming from outside sources, to have a fifty million dollar building and paying less than a third is really not bad economics. If we don't proceed, the twenty-five million of government monies will be allocated elsewhere to other municipalities. Those within the community who say that these funds could be put to better use by assisting farmers, the homeless and other worthwhile causes, the simple answer is the funding is allocated to the arts and must be speached in that area. It also comes back to a reputational risk, I think, that if we, for whatever reason, decide to knock back the recommendation, how are we going to go with cap in hand, back to government when we're looking for funds for, say for example, the sports precinct, the basketball stadium, caravan park? I think they'll probably laugh at us, to be perfectly honest, we wouldn't have a chance of getting further funding from them for some time. I'm not sure about councillor Summer's comments about local content, I'm confident the council staff are working with the builder to ensure maximum local content.
Point of order, I have shown councillor Jovanetti the page in the business case where it states about the local content, you've read it.
What I'm saying is I believe council staff are working with the builder to ensure local content is as high as possible. Look, I don't agree with how SAM was sold to the community initially, the figures used of a thirty-four point five million dollar build for SAM did not include any allowance for cost escalation, and was in my opinion not properly costed in the first instance. Consultation with the community could have been better at the time, although those that were involved at the time supported the concept of a new art museum. It's my belief that SAM will be a catalyst to increase tourism into the town, provide a place where our local community can visit, in a lovely setting to enjoy whatever exhibitions we have on offer.
Thank you very much councillor Jovanetti. Any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Hayesman.
I don't think I could...
I don't think I could surpass the efforts that Councillor Abdullah made in extolling the virtues and the merits of why I knew SAM was warranted. So I think I'll confine my comments a bit more to the process of how we got here. And it has been a fairly long and tortuous process, and I will slightly correct you, Councillor Adam, it's been going for a lot longer than five years.
Stand corrected, Councillor Hayesman.
That's all right, I don't mind. In fact, it features in the council plan circa 2012, at a time when ex-councillor Dobson, who's in the chamber today, was mayor of the municipality. And in that council plan at that time, it talks about exploring a feasibility study and business case for a new Shepherdan art gallery. So it's been around for a while. The councillor came in in 2012, actually initiated the feasibility study and engaged a consultant to develop the business case, which was adopted by the council in 2015. Moving on from there, there was the engagement of the architects some two years ago. We went to a design competition and now we're at the point of letting a tender. And it's significant that at various stages along the way, there's been various pause points where the council could have made different decisions. On each and every occasion, on the evidence available, made a decision to proceed. And so now we get to the point of a contract. And I think the contract position we've reached now works well to the benefit of the council. That doing this in stages provides flexibility in terms of its delivery, and it's a very, in my view, a very sound option. In terms of the issue around local content, I think we should trust the builder in terms of their reputation and previous performance. And as I understand it, their performance in Yumurka, in the development of the hospital in Yumurka where they were the construction contractor, they exceeded the expectation in terms of local content there. So I'm of the opinion that we should work closely with Kane Constructions to achieve a similar, if not better, outcome here. And it makes practical sense for a contractor who may not be physically located here to use local content. It reduces their costs in terms of not having to move tradesmen and so forth into town. So I think that's a positive outcome for us. The consequences of not proceeding, if this motion is not successful, what are the consequences? What are its impact on the overall project altogether? Is going back to re-tendering, redesign an option? Seriously, if this motion is not successful, it virtually means the abandonment of the project. And so what are the consequences of that? Others have talked about reputational damage. Reputational damage with state and federal governments. We've been dealing with a succession of bureaucrats who have provided advice to ministers and governments have made decisions. I think it would take us many a long year to recover that reputation because we'd be dealing with those same bureaucrats and whatever the next project might well be. And our reputation would be that of one as being untrustworthy and one who didn't follow through on their commitments. Not a reputation that I would like to aspire to for this council. We'd also have a financial implications. Money already spent, money committed. We are in a contractual arrangement with people at the moment. We did engage by resolution of this council, an architectural firm. And I would be assuming that in those contracts, there would be penalty clauses and payout figures around termination. And no doubt, any firm that we're currently in a contract that we now discontinued, as a result of that termination, they'd be seeking opportunity costs for the work that they missed out on while they were committed to Shepherdan. So it's not just the issue of the contract, it would go a lot, lot further than that. Which brings us to the legal position of if we wanted to terminate any contract, no doubt there would be a legal dispute about that position. So there are a series of consequences that people need to take on board and act rationally about. In supporting the motion, I think it's appropriate to acknowledge the contribution and commitment of both the state and federal governments and the foundation. They have made substantial commitments to this project and we should recognise and acknowledge it because obviously without their significant financial input here, this project would never be proceeding anyway. And I think the fact that over that long process, they have stayed the course, well, the council has stayed the course, is worth acknowledging. But in particular, I would like to acknowledge those people in the community who have committed their own personal funds to ensure that this comes about, but probably more important, their time. Now, this is a difficult process taken over a long period of time. And there's been people here who have been at this right from the beginning. And the fact that we're going to now move to a stage, hopefully, of going to construction, people will be able to see what they aspired to physically appearing on the lake. So I would support the motion and encourage the councils to do as well.
Thank you very much, Councillor Hayesman. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Sutton?
I'd just like to say that SAM is more than an art gallery. It will provide something for everyone. It will be a facility for all in our city and indeed in Australia. It will play a pivotal role in our culture and wellbeing of our community. SAM has one of the most recognised ceramic collections in Australia, and this new building will provide space for it to be displayed and enjoyed by all. Kaella will transfer to this building and their workshops and art will have a new space which will enable them to expand and grow. The building isn't just an art gallery. It will provide spaces for meetings, performances and many different projects that come along from time to time. I understand some of the community concerns, but would like to note that the funds for SAM are unable to be used for any other purpose.
The federal government has provided... Well, we are in our own funds as well.
Excuse me?
Just that that seems to be out in the...
What's the point of order? Sorry, Councillor Summer, what was the point of order?
There seems to be discussion that all of the money going towards SAM can't be used for other things, but our ratepayers' contribution could most certainly, and that's nearing twenty million.
So fifteen million dollars clarity, Councillor Summer, of council's money contribution, noted. You may continue, Councillor Sutton.
Thank you. The federal government has provided fifteen million and the state government ten million. If we don't go ahead with building SAM, these funds will go back into the government coffers to fund art projects in other regions. The funds committed by the SAM Foundation, philanthropic organisations and members of our community will also be lost. Also, we will owe the architects and builders huge amounts in compensation, and we will find it extremely difficult to rebuild our reputation with the government and the philanthropic societies that have supported Greater Shepherdan over the years. So I'm very happy to recommend that we support the SAM project for all the reasons I've just mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Sutton. Any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. We're a very diverse community, as most communities are. We're probably more diverse here than any other community or region in Victoria anyway. And we all have our different habits and our different likes and our different supports. Some people like soccer, some like AFL, some like playing tennis, some like the arts. We're all entitled to be able to enjoy what we actually pursue. We spend around ten million dollars a year on sport in this municipality, on ground maintenance, upkeep of infrastructure, new infrastructure and sponsorship attracting deals. And now we're going to spend a significant amount of money on art. I personally, like Councillor Jovanetti, aren't really a art fan. I occasionally get in here and have a look and I find some very interesting stuff. I'm personally a lot happier out on a river or in the bush. That is me. But we're all different, and that's the important thing. We are a very diverse community. I certainly, the main reason I support SAM, and when I was mayor three years ago, I attended several meetings and without even approaching a word SAM, there were several comments made from these organisations, like the Rural School of Health for instance, that said we are really struggling to attract the right people to our town to be able to fill these positions that are at the top of the tree, that allow them to develop and grow. And they thought SAM would be a great way of making a step in the right direction by being able to attract those people. When they do attract them, they're here for six months, their partner has nothing to do, they pack up and they go back to Melbourne. This is a way of diversifying our community. It's not the step that'll solely fix that problem, but is a step in the right direction. So people that are knocking SAM don't realise that one day it might save them a trip to Melbourne to see a heart specialist or some other major health issues. The specialists might be based in Shepherdan. And if we're to grow as a municipality, we need to do that. We're not just charged with growing, making new roads and footpaths, we're charged with growing the town and making a better place to live. And as I said, while I don't necessarily admire the arts that much, I do get there, but this is a step in the right direction to expand our town, to make it more livable, to make it more diverse. And generally, I'm very supportive. One thing that probably has been missed is the contingency, there's two and a half million dollars contingencies in the price. If it comes in on budget, like we're all putting, well, our CEO and the building crew, excuse me, are putting a lot of work in to make sure it does come up to the price, the tender price, that two and a half million will linger into the stage two, which is a car park and we won't have to attract another loan. But I fully support it. I believe one of the better things this municipality has done, and I support it one hundred per cent.
Thank you very much, Councillor Patterson. Would you like to use your right to reply, Councillor Adam?
I think I should, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank the comments from Councillor Hazelman, Councillor Patterson, Councillor Summer, Councillor Abdullah and Councillor Jovanetti. I just want to reiterate all those comments. I won't go over them again because there are so many positive points. I just want to wrap this up quickly by saying about two weeks ago, I was approached by someone on the street and they were questioning me as a councillor about Shepherdan and what we're doing as a council. And I was surprised for him, this person actually criticised the Sports City precinct down the road. And I said, well, it's about twenty million dollars we've spent. He said, I realise that and I don't...
Point of order, he's introducing new information in the closing comment.
He's actually pointing out the Sports City investment?
New information. Closing comments are only supposed to address what's been...
I think it's relevant to the conversation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My point is, I'm drawing contrast to people who aren't that arts orientated. There's a lot of people in our town that also aren't sports orientated, yet we choose to spend a lot of money there and well, that we do. I think it's a fantastic precinct and does service a lot of our community members, just as this project will. Basically, we've got to decide here today that do we want to be a progressive city moving forward? Do we want to develop our culture? Or do we want to be regressive and go back to the past and not move forward? That's what this is about. I understand the concerns that Councillor Summer has in respect to the budgeting process, and I have my own concerns about that, I expressed them earlier. But ultimately, this project must go forward. We talk about having iconic buildings and iconic structures and themes in cities. Well, I think this one will be by far our iconic building and will put Shepherdan on the national, if not the international map. So that's all I've got to say about that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So prior to going to the vote, I'd just like to make a few comments. Thank you, everyone, everyone who's been included in this conversation. As many of you know in the room, I'm pretty much a born and bred Shep girl. Moved here when I was three years of age and I am passionate about growth and the success of our region. I've recently taken on deputy chair of Regional Cities Victoria, which is an opportunity for our region to show that we are serious about growth, we are serious about opportunities. I see SAM as a great argument why we need other infrastructure, why we need more trains and better train services, better hospitals, all the things that make a community to thrive and really move forward. So last week, CEO and I were in Canberra, SAM came up. It was very much highlighted as aspirational, as progressive and as we've seen extra federal government support. So for me, it's about we deserve to be in the same space. We often talk about Geelong, Ballarat, Bendigo, those other successful regional cities. We need infrastructure to be up there, we need attraction, we need visitation, we need increased tourism. We've mentioned that, the sports facilities, you know, I think we had over a million visitors come to Greater Shepherdan last year. What can we do with something like SAM? How much can we increase that? I see a significant increase of visitation. So to me, it's about what my aspiration is as a councillor or as the mayor for future growth and future visitation, future opportunity. We have a good argument. We are so productive at the moment, and the positive messaging we received last week in Canberra was extraordinary. We're bold, we're pushing forward and we're pushing our way up, 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 up to future success. We need to be amongst the best in not just the state, but in the country. And SAM is going to start and be part of those very progressive conversations. I'm excited, you know, it's a big spend, fifteen million dollars, all the reasons have been pointed out today by my fellow councillors. Don't want to repeat that, it's all there. But I do believe that this is going to be a significant opportunity for Greater Shepherdan and for me to continue my argument about why we deserve future investment in our region because we want people to come. And how do they get here? Trains, you know, more, more accommodation. We've already had some interest across the board in accommodation. We are growing and it's an exciting time and SAM is going to be a very big part of our future success. All right, councillors, we will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against?
Please, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so all those in favour, we have Councillor Hazelman, Councillor Patterson, Councillor Sutton, Councillor Abdullah, Councillor Jovanetti, Councillor Adam and Councillor O'Keefe. And those against, Councillor Summer.
Permission to leave the meeting, please, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, what was that?
Permission to leave the meeting, please.
Granted.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may say a couple of words now that the vote's been taken. Can I just recognise a few people that are in the gallery? Firstly, Peter Quee, who was the original SAM Foundation Chair and did great work to get us to where we are today. So thank you, Peter. Acknowledge also John Head, current Chair of the Foundation and also doing great work to get us where we are today. There are other members of the Foundation here and other people to recognise, but that'll be done at a later date. I'll also recognise Angie Rusty from the Kaella Arts Gallery, and it's a key component of the conversation we're having here today and a key component of the success, or hopefully the success of the new SAM down the lake. So as I say, many people recognise, but that'll happen at a later date. There's just a few people here today I thought was worthy of doing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr Harriet. Councillors, we'll now go to item six point one on page thirteen, the GV Link Solar Farm Proposed Lease Agreement. Would a councillor please like to move the motion? Councillor Adam?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation on page fourteen as the motion. I was going to read it out, but I don't think I'll be...
We might just have a pause. We might just pause for a couple of moments. Okay, councillors, sorry, we'll go back to item six point one. GV Link Solar Farm Proposed Lease Agreement. We had Councillor Adam go and move, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will read it out as well, I think it's important. The motion is that the council note the objections received under section two-two-three of the Local Government Act nineteen eighty-nine pertaining to council's intention to enter into a lease agreement with GVCE Marupna Solar Proprieties Limited for the lease of the GV Link land east of T攭amba Road and the railway line, being part of the land in certificate of title volume one-two-oh-two-two folio eight-nine-one, formerly part of volume eleven-oh-seven-one folio one-four-four known as T攭amba Road, Marupna land for the purpose of construction and use as a solar farm. Also note that council has reviewed and considered both objections under section two-two-three of the Local Government Act, grant the lease to GVCE Marupna Solar Proprieties Limited on terms included within the proposed negotiated lease agreement, and authorise the chief executive officer to sign and seal all the documents necessary to facilitate the granting of the lease.
Thank you very much, Councillor Adam. Do I have a second, please?
Have a second, definitely.
Councillor Jovanetti. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just briefly, Madam Mayor, this is a project that's been on our books for eighteen months or so now. Council resolved to lease out a portion of the land, and the land that is being leased out is, I think it's subject to flooding and inundation, so it's not really useful for building structures on as such, but it is deemed as being appropriate for this type of project. I think it's a win-win for everyone. We'll be getting a sizeable lease, financial lease from these people each year, which is great. It also contributes to the ever-increasing burden that most businesses and residential properties in our municipality have in respect to getting power or electricity. So that's the way of the future. I think solar is a no-brainer in this sense, and this project just absolutely fulfils our aspirations in that respect.
Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Adam. Councillor Jovanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
I can't add much more than what Councillor Adam has already mentioned, but I think the good thing is that this is the signing of the lease. We will be awaiting a planning application from GVCE Marupna Solar to get that application in and get working on this project. This is part of our council plan to foster and develop the use of solar, both on our own facilities and also on our land. And I think it's an excellent achievement to get to this point, although it's taken a heck of a long time to get here, we now hope things move along very quickly.
Thank you, Councillor Jovanetti. Thank you councillor Jovanetti. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just...
Councillor Hazelman?
Madam Mayor, yeah, the comments that have been passed that this is about actually the lease of the land and the two objections that were received relate more to the operation of the solar farm, which we're anticipating we'll get a planning permit come later. So those objectives will get another bite of the cherry. That planning permit will go out for public advertisement. They'll be able to apply and go through the processes and ultimately, if they wish, all the way to VCAT. So this is very much the first stage of the process, that we've secured the land, we're now into the process of leasing the land and ultimately we'll see a planning permit and those processes will follow their due course.
Thank you very much councillor Hazelman. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion?
Just quickly, Madam Mayor. Solar farms are so unpopular.
Everyone left.
But it really is good to see this advance.
But they're very popular.
Last 13 months have been dragging on a little bit. The real secret to this is that it's a community group that are moving ahead and it's great to work with a community group on a community project like this. Yeah, hope it all goes well.
Thank you very much councillor Patterson. Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We'll now go to the vote. All those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors' outputs are closed to our special council meeting today, so I now declare the meeting closed at nine minutes to two. Thank you very much.